Hi, good afternoon, everyone. We're here for the Norfolk County Commissioners' meeting of Monday, December 30, 2024. We started a little late. We had a little complications with our technology. And sorry about starting late, but this is kind of a meeting in between last Wednesday and this Wednesday, because we have the two holidays, so we're having the meeting today. It's also possible that we may have a meeting tomorrow, as there are some additional ARPA applications that may come in. That's already scheduled. That may or may not take place. It kind of depends on whether those additional applications are done in time for tomorrow. So, welcome to the meeting. I have to read the following. Pursuant to Executive Order on Remote Participation on Wednesday, March 29, 2023, Governor Healey signed into law Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, an act making appropriations for fiscal year 2023, which includes a two-year extension of the option for public bodies to hold remote meetings by suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, Master and Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20. That action was effective immediately extending the current option for remote meetings through March 31, 2025. Votes may be taken on any of the content listed herein. And I'm going to say the Pledge of Allegiance right now. And when we're done with the Pledge of Allegiance, I'm going to ask you to stand for one more second. And we're going to see a quick moment of silence for President Carter, passed away. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. Okay, call to order. We've done that roll call. Richard Stady.
I'm here by remote. No, it's your acting chairman.
Okay, and Joseph Shea, our chairman. Okay, and the reason I'm cheering the meeting is we do have remote participation, and sometimes it's hard to cheer the meeting remotely. And that's why I'm cheering it, but only at the urging of Chairman Shea. And if he wants to take over the meeting at any time, he may do so. Okay, item number three is Executive Session. There is no Executive Session today. Item four is Minutes, and we don't have the minutes yet. So we're going to do that for the next meeting next week. Number five is Appointments. We don't have any appointments. And the next item is number six, Public Comment.
I see Peter Bullitt. Do we have Executive Sessions minutes also?
No, we don't have any minutes, Richard.
I'll make a motion to be able to table action on both open and executive sessions for approval.
Yeah, okay, that's fine.
There's nothing to table. We don't have a product. They'll be ready next week.
Yeah, we can just put it off without a motion, Richard, if you want, because we don't have anything to table. They're not available yet.
Move on.
Okay.
I think.
Okay. Okay. So number five, there's no appointments. Item six, Public Comment. Every week, we ask anyone, as our chairman says in Zoomland, to comment on county business. And if anyone wishes to speak up now about their public comment, please do so. Okay, hearing no one. I know that I talked to the director that no one had phoned in seeking public comment in advance. So we're going to move on to item seven, Old Business. There is no old business. So I'm moving on to item eight, Personnel Matters. You fellows may not have this. So I'm going to read it. There's only one personnel paper for our consideration today. And this is the resignation for George Sullivan of Milton as Assistant Superintendent, effective 12/27/24. George found an opportunity that was very favorable to him, and he will be missed at the county. But we do need a motion to approve the blue paper.
I so moved.
Okay, and Joe, do you want to second that? Okay, all right. And Chairman Shea, seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay, it's unanimous. Terrific. And do we, oh, I apologize, gentlemen. Do we have your permission to use your stamps today?
Can I just read it?
Okay, so they both said affirmative. Terrific.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. All right, next. The next item is Payroll and Expense Warrants for Approval. Are these the? I know, I'm going to have to read it. So these are the ARPA's that we're doing today, and then we have the other ARPA's that are different, right?
Yep.
Okay, all right.
Can I have a quick second look? Let me show those a little bit. One second.
All right. We're just checking the numbers.
We're going to have to count out payroll in county, too?
Yeah, I'm going to do that. I'll read it all.
That is good.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, okay, warrant list. So what I'll do is I'll make them, I'll read it, Richard. If you just want to say, I'll make that motion, and then Joe can second it if appropriate, and then it'll come back to me, and I'll just run it through. So the first item on the warrant list is 25-25 Payroll of the County in the amount of $148,766.2.
I'll move that.
And Joe said second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay, it's approved. The next item is 25-25 Subsection 13, Payroll of the School in the amount of $401,18.
I'll move that.
And second, Joe? Okay, all in favor, say aye. Aye. It's unanimous. Terrific. Next item is Payroll of the County 25-26 in the amount of $148,905.69. Richard?
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It is unanimous. Okay, next is Expense of the County, for warrant 120425.
So moved.
Okay, Joe, second? I think Joe froze. But I did get a second out of him. I saw that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, terrific. Okay, now I'm going to read a whole bunch of ARPA's. These are the ARPA's which are going to be acted upon. These are not the backup ARPA's, all right?
Closeout, closeout.
These are not the, these are the, are these the closeout?
Yep.
Okay, these are the closeout ARPA's.
The final awards of the program.
These are the final official awards of the program. Later, we're going to talk about other awards in case, for whatever reason, there's excess money. But that's going to be separate from this. So the first item is warrant 25-27 ARPA Franklin in the amount of $8,304. Richard?
Oh, would I vote each one?
Yeah, we're going to vote. No, I have to vote each one of these, because they're all different.
Okay, so moved.
Okay, Joe, second? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. Okay, the next one is warrant 25-27 ARPA Wellesley in the amount of $666,408.89. Joe, second?
Seconded.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it is unanimous. Next is 25-27 ARPA Medfield in the amount of $20,000. Richard?
So moved.
Joe?
Seconded.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It is unanimous. Next item, 25-27 ARPA Bellingham in the amount of $153,039.99.
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's approved. Next item is 25-27 ARPA Cohasset in the amount of $167,145.33.
So moved.
Seconded, seconded.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It is unanimous. Item 25-27 ARPA Norwood in the amount of $6,061.
I so moved.
Seconded.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's approved. Unanimous. Next item is 25-27 ARPA Norfolk County in the amount of $100,000, 25-27.
Is that Norfolk or Norfolk County?
Norfolk County.
Okay, so moved.
Seconded.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's approved. So thank you for taking care of the warrant list, gentlemen. Okay, next, let's see. All right, report on American Rescue Plan Act of 2021. Director Cronin, please.
Thank you, Commissioner Collins and Commissioner Shea, Commissioner Stady. Congratulations on awarding the final grant awards associated with this program. You have officially completed the phase regarding obligation of eligible funds against allotment. There are over 277 applications that have been approved and distributed across the county over the last two years, three years, actually. And what I wanted to do, Bill Buckley has access to the spreadsheet that is tracking how things ended up. I'll show you the clean slate that we are currently operating on, Bill. If you'd be so kind, pull it up. If you have difficulty doing that, let me know. Okay, this is a favorable thing. So you'll have to make that a little bigger, Bill. But I just wanted to bring to the commissioner's attention the activity associated with the grant date. Couple of things. Thank you, Bill. So I'll call your attention to column F on that spreadsheet. It shows every town in Norfolk County receiving their allotment, the amount that was distributed to each community based on population. You can see there, Canton had some funds left over. They told us to put it back in the pool. That's fine. And many other communities had several dollars or cents left over. So at the end of the day, $1,858 was sort of the leakage that will be placed into the administration of the grant program, along with the $7,477.94 you see at the bottom of column H. So those funds will be absorbed into our administrative costs, which are shown under column B at the bottom. We placed 1.582 to administer, and that's where we'll place this $9,336. But absent that, every other community has now been awarded funds. And I'm happy to report that we continue to receive interest in what's called excess allotment applications. And through you, Mr. Collins, if you don't mind, I'll talk about that briefly, because there's some actions required today on those as well, okay?
Sure.
So commissioners, you may recall that earlier this year, the county began its closeout process. We alerted every community about our intentions to extend the grant agreements and to also get approved closeout plans from each community and how they plan to use those funds. By and large, that process was very successful. We were able to manage most grants well into the end of fiscal year '24. But through the summer and fall of FY '25, as you know, we had a few communities that really needed some intensive assistance, getting their grants approved and to the endgame, which, as I mentioned, we have achieved. During that same closeout process, we alerted communities that the way the final rule works is there's a possibility that funds that are declared surplus from previously awarded grants might become available. You're allowed to transfer within obligated grant applications. So through your actions today, you'll be voting on 11 additional grant applications that we have received and have approved to date. These applications basically function as relief valves. They'll sit out on the portal as unfunded obligated applications. As of January 1 and through the end of 2026, we'll use these applications, as well as existing applications, as possible platforms to move any surplus dollars. So I want to emphasize, the excess applications are not funded. There is no dollar value associated with them. Commissioner Collins will read a motion that is associated with this that does not include spending any money. We're simply obligating them as eligible applications that may receive funding in the next two years. So after advertising this wildly across the county, several communities have taken advantage of putting in excess capacity applications. Not all of them are eligible. Several of them have frankly been rejected because they're not eligible. Today, I wanted to report, we have 11 that are ready for a vote today. There are four more currently at Pen One status that are being reviewed by the auditors who are working overtime. And they may, they may be ready by tomorrow, which is the absolute drop-dead date. We, through you, Commissioner Collins, Commissioner Stady, and Commissioner Shea, we'd like you to consider giving these few communities the opportunity to get a last-minute excess capacity grant application in tomorrow. I will alert you individually if the meeting is indeed necessary. We're working hard to get them to the end zone. I don't know if they'll be ready by the close of business, or certainly by the time your meeting is tomorrow. But today, I have 11 excess capacity or excess allotment applications ready. And I just wanted to bring into full focus how the grant program is closing. I think you folks have done a wonderful job preparing the counties to receive every penny that they were eligible for, as well as getting ourselves positioned for the next two years under monitoring to fully realize a place for surplus dollars to land if they do develop. So Commissioner Collins, if you'd like to, I'll turn it over to you to deal with the 11 excess applications from those communities.
Okay, so.
Unless you want any questions on where we stand.
Yeah, do you fellows have any questions? Richard, what do you got?
Good question, and through you, acting chairman. So my understanding that is after tomorrow, no one could apply for anything?
Correct.
That's it? You apply for the excess amount? That's it? Maybe the deadline is tomorrow?
That's correct. That's right.
Okay. Can you tell me, through you to John, if the town of Westwood did get an application in, they were looking for some help?
I don't know off the top of my head. I can talk to you off, I can call you later on and let you know their status. I don't know off the top of my head. They're not in the list that you are being asked to act upon today.
I noticed that, that's why I asked. They spoke, I spoke to someone in town. They were looking for help. I'm surprised I didn't see it. But again, you know, you never know. So I was just wondering about that. But tomorrow's the drop-dead absolute deadline, right? That's it?
Yes, sir, for obligating, yep.
Last question, if I could, real quick. Is the county looking to apply at these funds maybe for some of these wealth? Maybe at our school in some way, or something like that?
Yeah. So the county has two applications in the excess allotment space, Commissioner Stady. One is for weights and measures program. And the other, and I'm glad you mentioned this, I was going to give credit later. I wanted to pass along my personal thanks to Phil Iantosca, who did hours and hours of work pulling old records. What we did is we looked back over the last three years since March of 2021 at any county-funded capital project. And he pulled together all the invoices and related expense records for each project. And we're able to pull together a total list, I believe, of 16 packets or 16 projects during that time period that total over $1.4 million. So in the event that the county sees any surplus funds that the commissioners deem should come back to the county, we would reimburse ourselves through those various projects as effectively reimbursement for cash that you'd already spent. So yes, is the answer to your question. I want to again thank Phil. It was a lot of work over an intensive period of time. He did most of it during the week of Christmas. But we're in good position to optimize any surplus funds that fall our way that the commissioners think should go to the county.
Excellent. Thank you very much. No further questions, Peter. Thank you.
Okay, Joe, do you have any questions, or you're all set? Okay, great, he's all set. So, Richard, because I know you don't have this, and I do, I'm going to read it as a proposed motion. And if you agree, just say, I'll make the motion, okay? So again, just to clarify, this is a motion for for applications which are not funded, but they will be obligated if the funding becomes available at a later date.
No, they're obligated through your vote today.
They're, well, they're, yeah, they're, let me say it again. They're obligated through our vote today, but at present, they're unfunded.
That's correct.
Okay, all right. So the proposed motion is to approve for obligation purposes the following excess capacity applications. Now, do you want to read the whole sheet, or just the tally?
Actually, each one would be great. You don't need to do the tally.
All right, so I'm going to read this whole thing as one big item. So this is part of that motion. The first is ARPA 1323 Quincy in the amount of $1 million. Item two is ARPA 1365 Dedham for $124,812.23. Item three is ARPA 1369 Dover in the amount of $49,000. Item four is ARPA 1372 Rentham in the amount of $33,415.6. Item five is ARPA 1373 Midway in the amount of $105,000. Item six is ARPA 1374 Midway in the amount of $99,878.20. Item seven is ARPA 1375 Milton in the amount of $576,615.42. Item eight is ARPA 1376 Milton in the amount of $850,147.58. Item nine is ARPA 1377 Franklin in the amount of $675,000. Item 10 is ARPA 1381 County of Norfolk in the amount of $98,034. And item 11, the last one, is ARPA 1382 County of Norfolk in the amount of $1,493,673.9. And the total excess capacity application is for $5,105,000. Five million, sorry, start again. Again, these are unfunded but obligated applications. Richard, do you so move?
I so moved now, as presented and read by you. Mr. Collins.
Seconded.
I just wanted to, thank you. Commissioner Stady, Mr. Buck, who I mean, does not have anything in the floor right now.
Okay, so motions are made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 That's unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen. That's, that was a lot. All right, next. Report from the Procurement Department, Bid Openings and Contract Awards.
Good afternoon.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, all.
Maureen.
Good. So I have a few contracts in front of you, ready to be signed. And if we do them in order, one, would you like me to review briefly?
Sure.
Okay. The first one is the replacement of three HVAC units in various courthouses. The second one is HVAC and automated building services for the Dedham District Court. The third one is the Tennis Court Reconstruction Project at Wallaston Rec. And the fourth is the extension of the ARPA Coordinator contract.
Okay, all right, so.
Mr. Chairman, real quick.
Sure.
First, thank you to Maureen and her team. These grants, the first three, are funded primarily through ARPA. During our transition from Nancy Rockwell, ultimately to Maureen, the team did an enormous amount of work preparing the bids, putting them out to bid in some cases twice, and getting them ready for your consideration today. So I just wanted to highlight that the first one for the HVAC replacements at three courthouses, that had $228,000 from ARPA. The Dedham District Court, that one was an $800,000 ARPA project. And then finally, the Tennis Court Reconstruction was a $300,000 ARPA project. In areas where, for example, the HVAC replacement at the three courthouses, the available ARPA money required additional funds from the county. In this case, I believe that's coming from the facilities maintenance being budget-morning. That's a good thing. They're covering the delta. Regarding the Dedham District Court, you'll see that the distance between the ARPA award of $800,000 and then $750, that presents itself as a potential surplus, right? So mark this, because in a few months, when the project's done, and if in fact we do see a $50,000 surplus on that grant, that will be eligible for a transfer back to an eligible grant, okay? So bear that in mind. That's at least one that we know of. And then additionally, as you can see, the Tennis Court is right up against it with just a couple of hundred, excuse me, a couple of thousand dollars between the $300,000 award and that which Maureen read. This project, Maureen will point that out, is slim, if not none, nil on any contingency. So we're going to keep an eye on this as it goes forward. This will be a spring project. So I just wanted to underline again, these were ARPA funds that the county leveraged in lieu of capital money, obviously, to get things done in a most efficient way. But I wanted to thank the procurement people, because they did yeoman work over the last three months getting us to this position. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So starting with the contract for award, do you want a motion on each of those?
Yes.
Okay, so. Just read it as it is?
If you could make it, I'll go down there in front of me.
Right.
It's high, but.
Right.
It's fair, you know.
All right, so the first one is a contract for award for HVAC replacement at three courthouses, Brookline, Stoughton, and Rentham. And what's that dollar amount? Does it say?
Yes.
Eight hundred thousand?
Okay. Richard, do you want to make that motion?
Stand by, please. You need the vendor's name.
I'm going.
Okay. And the vendor's name is?
That is Industrial Burner Systems, Inc.
And we've worked with them in the past. Okay, so motions are made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that's item one. The next is a contract award for Dedham District Court, BMS/HVAC, project, Maureen.
That is with Automated Building Systems, Inc. at $750,250.
Richard?
$750,000? What was that dollar amount? I didn't hear you.
$250.
$250, thank you. Yep, I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay. Joe, second?
Seconded.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 That's unanimous. Next is a contract for award for Tennis Court Reconstruction Project at the Wallaston Recreational Facility. Maureen?
That is with Belko Landscaping, Inc. at $297,400. Recom, engineers after review.
We don't have a call after.
Richard? Richard?
I'm going to, sorry. I have to say it, and I didn't hear it. Somebody else is talking.
Okay, we'll try it again.
Okay, the contract has been awarded to Belko Landscaping LLC in the amount of $297,400.
Okay, $297,400. So moved, it's your acting chairman. So moved.
Joe, it's a second.
Seconded.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. Okay, the next is back to the County Director, Contract Extension for the ARPA Coordinator.
Uh.
Let's go through Maureen also.
Maureen will.
Okay, great. Okay, Maureen, thanks.
We haven't built in enough time for his contract. It was only offered for two years and will need his services longer. So we're going to extend for 60 days and put it out to bid. He has already agreed to serve us in, at minimum, the 60 days that we'll need and potentially longer.
And how much is that for 60 days, do you know?
I didn't do the math.
On March 3.
Thirty.
Okay, through March 3, okay. So this, this just extends out the contract for Bill Galvin as our coordinator for a few more months to wrap up the project.
Well, we'll be, we'll bring forward an additional bid for these services. I don't know if it'll be billed once we put it out to bid. So we'll be back hopefully within another month or so with a new bid. But this extends the current one through March 3.
Okay, so this just extends the current contract with Bill Galvin for a few months until the next contract is bid out.
In there, I mean, it's not lasting. Do we have to do anything relative to our administrator and also our assistant? Or is that a separate thing? Because this is all ARPA-related. Do we need to extend them and make a vote or something like that? Or how is that? Could it probably manage? And I know it's keeping on. I know we're gonna look at it for another two years, I think.
I think this I think this is this is different because this was a separate
Contract.
A separate contract with a timeline. And our our individual people working on this within the county on on the timeline.
You'd previously approved that.
Why? I'm only asking, is there a reason why we couldn't do it ninety days rather than sixty, sixty, like top window? Can we continue? Then we got a little freedom room for us?
We could. We have not put the bid out yet, so that's a possibility. I was trying to act expediently.
That's all. What's going on? They're trying to have a little comfort zone. Can we amend that motion? Make it for ninety days, and then we can try to get things, kind of, put it out?
I believe it has to be sixty because it's a current contract that we're hoping to put out to bid in sixty days as our.
We'll 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 get we'll get we'll have to run away though, Richard. There won't be there won't be any problems. It'll get done within sixty days.
Okay, all right, that's fine. All right. I'm going in.
Do you make do you make that motion? Yep. Okay, Joe, second? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Okay, moving on. Thank you, Maureen. Real soon. Thank you. All right. So item thirteen is a November trial balance for acceptance. I have that number as thirty-eight million three hundred and seventy-three thousand five hundred and sixty-eight dollars and ninety-six cents. Richard, do you want to make the motion?
I certainly will. I'll move that.
Okay, Joe, Joe, second?
Second.
Right for acceptance. Yes.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye? Okay, that's unanimous. Item fourteen, Gatsby statements, number number seventy-four and seventy-five, report for fiscal year twenty twenty-four for acceptance. John?
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioners, earlier this year, you and the advisory board funded contractual services of Joe Moreau and Stone Consulting to have a closer look at the county's OPEB liability and our overall position according to Gatsby seventy-four and seventy-five. I just wanted to, before you take any action on accepting this report, I wanted to lay out a couple of important items. The current total liability for the county regarding OPEB, which is other public employee benefits, is thirty-five million seven hundred three thousand five hundred and six dollars. This is after a planned fiduciary payment of two million six hundred and twelve thousand five hundred and twenty-one dollars is made. Regarding the plan overall, commissioners may be curious to know that the plan currently funds four hundred and thirty-six individuals. That is two hundred and thirty-two retired disabled survivors and beneficiary beneficiaries who are receiving benefits from the county, as well as two hundred and one active plan members. As the county commissioners probably understand, OPEB is a large unfunded liability on the books of almost every community in Massachusetts. We are no different. The county has made regular and recurring payments associated with this liability, including as reported on page two of the report, up to, on average, a hundred and forty thousand dollars a year from our operating budget. And then in years when our revenues are more favorable, we make additional contributions. This particular liability is something that we will tend to manage over the next several years. But this report is critical for our bond rating agencies, as well as our auditors who require this information to complete. In this case, when it comes around the FY twenty-four audit. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, do we need a vote for acceptance on that?
Please, thank you.
Richard, do you want to make a motion to accept the Gatsby statements, number seventy-four and seventy-five, report for fiscal year twenty twenty-four?
Yes, I'll move that. Yes, sir. Yep.
Joe, second?
Seconded.
Okay, all in favor, say aye, please?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's approved. Next is report of the county director.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a few items. The budget schedule for FY twenty-six budget development will be going out very shortly from Phil Iantosca. In this case, the budget schedule will indicate that a memo from the county director to department heads giving guidance on FY twenty-six developments, including planned COLAs, will be forthcoming next week. And the schedule from Phil will give you the additional information relative to when they are due, what time your meetings and dates are with the commissioners, and so on and so forth, taking us all the way into April. I just wanted to again alert the commissioners, there's a possibility of a meeting tomorrow. You are posted at one o'clock. I will alert you before then if the meeting is needed. I'm hoping that we can optimize the remaining applications in the portable portal up to the last minute. Thank you for your help on that, by the way. There will be no meeting on Wednesday. It's obviously a federal holiday and a county holiday. The next scheduled meeting for the commissioners will be Wednesday, January eighth, following tomorrow's meeting. There will be swearing in for eligible electeds on Wednesday. I believe the time set is approximately ten thirty AM. Those activities will take place virtually, associated with the county commissioners, the register, and so forth. So just an announcement on that level. Commissioner Stady, you just a few minutes ago alluded to a very busy time coming up, and you're spot on. January presents as a relatively busy time for a period with holidays, but I wanted to alert the commissioners that we'll be discussing opioid grants, obviously, the FY twenty-six budget schedule. On the twenty-eighth, you have a commissioners' association meeting. Earlier today, I had a meeting with Commissioner Mark Forrest and the Barnstable County Director, Michael Dutton, to discuss that agenda. I can assure you, it's a very robust agenda that will include legislative, ARPA, and other updates that are important to the commissioners' business. And I also want to remind the commissioners that an upcoming meeting, you're going to be required to reorganize. I believe we'll place that through the chairman on the January eighth meeting. So that is all I have at this time.
Did you have a date for that meeting with Mark Forrest? Are you still working on that?
January twenty, January twenty-eighth.
Thank you, sir. Thank you so much. Thank you. Okay. January twenty eighth. Yeah. The reorganization, is that good in in our first official meeting in January? Is that what you're saying?
That's correct.
Okay. We have our swearing in on January first, right?
Correct. But that isn't a meeting day, yes.
That provided my internet's working. It's been an incredible time down here, but we're getting there. I had no access. I had no cable. I had no heat. It's been unbelievable. It's a very, it's a very remote area. It's nice because upside and downside, but when when there's a blizzard or a snowstorm or wind, it's kind of like roughing it, but we're getting there. We're getting there. So, all right.
Okay, so that was that was item fifteen, and you just discussed item sixteen, the discussion about early January meeting schedule. And item seventeen is emergency emergency items topics that the chair did not reasonably anticipate would be discussed. I know that there's one more item. Do you want to talk about it? You want me to talk about it?
Go right ahead, sir.
Okay, so the county commissioners have to authorize the election for the register of deeds. And so we have to have a motion to approve the election results for the register of deeds. And I have that that information here. I have the the actual language of that. So I'll read it, Richard. If you want to make the motion, that'd be great. Does that sound okay? Okay. Whereby it appears William P. O'Donnell, Norwood, Mass., having received the highest number of votes, is elected register of deeds for the term of six years from the first Wednesday of Wednesday of January next and until his successor is chosen and qualified. And certificate of election was duly issued to the said William P. O'Donnell and notice also given to the Secretary of State of the Commonwealth in conformity with the requirements of the laws of the Commonwealth, witnessed our hands and seal of the County of Norfolk at Dedham. This says this thirteenth day of December twenty twenty-four, but our motion will be today.
You you said the thirty, I think.
It says it says thirtieth on this piece of paper, but yes, it's December thirtieth.
That's correct.
Yes, correct. Sorry. Thank you, Richard. Is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Joe, Joe, you want to second that?
I'll second it. Yes, seconded.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
And again, we have your permission to stamp the document for the Board of Examiners, correct?
Sure.
Correct.
All right. Yes.
May I?
Sure.
With the potential federal day of mourning looming on January ninth, do we have to do anything as a county to decide how that affects us?
Okay, here.
John wanted to know that if January ninth is declared a federal day of mourning, he wanted to know how that affected the county and affected the school. And I I don't have an answer to that, but we can look into that and get back to you on that.
Okay, yeah, because I'm sure I'm sure it'll come up on Thursday when teachers come back. They'll be wondering, is school gonna be open on that day? Will we count that as a workday for the county, or is everyone gonna be off that day? I think that's what happened last time. There was a federal day.
Take a good first class when you get back.
All right. So so thank you, John, and and our chairman just said, well, let's take that under advisement, and we'll have an answer for you before that. All right. Anything else, gentlemen?
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. Richard, do I have a do I have a motion to adjourn?
We might have a meeting if we do a meeting at one o'clock if we're having a meeting.
Yeah, yeah, tomorrow's at one o'clock, yes. If we have a meeting.
I don't know why.
Okay, Richard, motion to adjourn? Okay, motions are made to adjourn and seconded. All in favor? Aye. And a happy new year to you all if we don't make it for tomorrow's meeting. So thank you all.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.